Well, I just want to welcome everybody here tonight. I know we'll probably have some other parents walking in, but I just want to say thank you guys so much for being here. We knew that Friday night after Expo, after the 3rd through 5th grade awesome spring concert on Tuesday, and some other things, we knew Friday night might be a little different. But we also knew that next week and beyond, we have so many other things happening. And this really was like the only day and the only night that we could really do this. Now, usually a town hall meeting is more of a time for us to really dialogue together and conversate. This is kind of more of like a state of the school type of address, where I want to share with you a lot of the vision of UCA and where we're going. There will be time for some dialogue and some questions afterwards. But we also have next Thursday night from 6:00 to 6:45, a time with our board. And you guys can come, and that is going to be more of that dialogue and answers and questions and all those types of things. So if you guys want to come to that, I know that we sent that out to you guys. And that's going to be from 6:00 p.m. to 6:45 p.m. So far, we don't know if it's going to be in the gym or the cafeteria. It's to be determined, but we'll let you guys know as soon as possible. Before we start, I just want to open up in a word of prayer, and then we'll go ahead and start. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much just for who you are. Thank you so much, God, for the vision that you have for UCA. On this campus, that we get to glorify your name, that we get to share the gospel of Jesus Christ and the salvation that he brings to every single family and every single foot that steps onto this campus. We're so thankful for this community, the families that are here and the students. And we ask that you would just continue to guide our steps and help our hearts and minds be in alignment with your spirit. So we give tonight to you, and we just ask that you just continue to give us wisdom as we make great decisions just for the kingdom overall, but also for UCA as we go into the future. In Jesus' name, amen. So again, I just want to say thank you guys for partnering with us. I know the last two years have been crazy, right? With the pandemic and growth and knowing where we're at now, and then knowing like, okay, where are we going in the future? So the main reason for tonight with this town hall meeting was to go over a lot of the parent responses from the survey that we gave to you guys about a month and a half ago. We had a pretty good turnout of responses that came our way. And so I want to share with you guys some of the themes that we saw from that. And those are the things that we really want to target as we move forward. Because it's great that we have strengths, but if we just focus on the strengths and we don't focus on the areas of improvement, then we're never going to be able to grow effectively. And so I want to be able to share that with you guys, but then also be able to share the vision of UCA and where we move forward. And again, I do want to just say, last night was amazing. Our Expo and just seeing the community and everyone here. I know that we had some mishaps on the bounce houses there. I know my son came home, he was like, "My neck hurts." I'm like, "What happened?" He's like, "Some kid jumped from the top and like..." And I'm like, "Whoa." So those are the things where it's like, well, who was supervising that? And all the kids were like, "I don't know." I'm like, area of improvement. We need to figure that part out. So I want to apologize for that. We needed to have better supervision on our bounce houses. But ultimately, seeing everybody at the tables, walking around the rooms and coming through here, it was just a really great experience. That's something that's tradition for us, and it's something that we look forward to at the end of the school year, every year. I do want to thank you guys for the responses to the survey. The survey helps us identify areas that we get to look at ourselves inwardly and be like, okay, where do our parents and our students and our staff, what do they see areas that we need to work on? It's easy, I think, for just us to look at ourselves, but it's also good for someone else to come and say, "Hey, Mark, maybe you need to do it this way," right? And I haven't thought of that before. And so those are areas that the survey actually gives us a glimpse into where are we strong, but what are the areas that we need to work in as well? And so I do want to share our mission with you guys. Our mission is the thing that we attempt to strive to be all the time, 100% of the day. And you guys can see it up there. It's to educate students by integrating academic excellence with a Christian worldview, equipping them to impact their world for Christ. And that is the reason, that is the main reason why we exist as a school. Now, I don't know if you know the history of our school, but we were in Upland, okay? I was fortunate enough to be over on that campus. 18 years ago, I was hired over there. And to be able to be over on that campus for five years and see the stuff that happened and what God was doing for our school. And we moved over to this campus. And to be able to see the last 13 years where God has brought us is absolutely amazing. When we came on this campus, we were a school of 350 students. Next year, we're potentially going to be at 850 students. So in 13 years, that is a 500-student growth. And I know one of the responses was, "Whoa, let's not grow too fast." There was a lot of parents that are like, "Let's pump the brakes on them. Let's have quality versus quantity." And I agree in that statement, but I do feel like you can have both. And the reason why you can have both is how are we structured? How do we effectively do it? How do we grow with intention, right? So those are the things that we want to be committed to as we move forward, because that is why we exist. So we want kids to know who Jesus is, plain and simple. If the kids go through our school and they graduate, and they don't know who Jesus is, then we failed. We can teach them math, we can teach them history, we can teach them all those things. But if they don't know who Jesus is and what he has done for them and for us, then we feel like we have failed as a school. Because that is why we're here. And that is being a good steward of what God has given us here on this campus with ALC. So I want to go through some of the things. So I just want to share some of the responses, because we do want to grow intentionally. We want to make sure that we are striving to be the best that we can be in everything. So as we strive to do that, we did see and we discovered some major themes in our survey. And these are the major themes that we saw. Some of them are discipline, our teaching, our dress code, staff training, mental health, bullying, and then overall school growth. Those are the major ones that we kind of pulled out and were like, "Okay, here are the things that we see that we're identifying. How can we make these things better?" Right? And so I want to share with some of the smaller items that I felt even out of this, that I kind of wanted to focus on, because there were some responses that targeted our cultural and generational awareness and diversity. So if you look at our school campus and our students, K through 12, it is diverse, okay? And right now, I don't know how all the generations go. I think I'm a Generation X, right? And then there's Y, and then there's all these different ones. But right now, we have a Generation C. They're called Generation Z-ers. And the next generation, our young ones, are actually called Generation Alpha, okay? And there's a lot of research that suggests, coming out of the pandemic, they're experiencing a lot of mental health. Right now, there's a lot of lack of authority happening and disrespect amongst kids coming out of the pandemic, right? And so we're seeing a lot of that on our campus. We're seeing a lot of areas that we need to target, not just the students, but our staff. How do we train our staff effectively to meet the needs of our diverse population? And so we found that that was a response in our survey that jumped out to me. If we're not properly training our teachers to be a part of what's happening with our young people, then we are not getting them ready for this world. And so that was one thing that we definitely saw and we want to target. Definitely mental health and then obviously growth of school. I don't want to grow too fast, but at the same time, we do want people to come and know Jesus. So it's a balancing act. Now, we asked ourselves with school of growth, because next year, we are adding 100-plus new students. Last year, we added 190. So that's almost going to be a 300-student growth within two years. And later on the evening, we're going to show you a video, kind of our answer to some of that growth and what we're doing with that. But I want to let you know how we kind of came to that conclusion of what kind of school we want to be. So we started at the high school level. So we have high school 9th through 12th. We asked ourselves, what does a school, a high school, and how many students would be the perfect high school? Because right now, we don't even have a girls' soccer team. Because we're so small, it has to be coed. So in order to have different programs, in order to have JV and varsity, arts, all these different items, we felt that a school of 400 students was the perfect amount to have for a small, private, Christian school. We have about 180-something students in high school right now. In order for us to get there, where do you have to start? Kindergarten, so we can retain, we can move up, we can get there. Now, that's going to be eight to 10, 11 years down the road. But this year, we had the student population for kinder and first grade to add another level. Because that means that would have to be 100 kids at each school level as you grow up. Because 9th grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade would put you at 400 students. So we decided as an administration that we were going to add 100 students at kinder level and another 100 at first grade next year. And then that's going to build as we move forward. So do the maths, probably like 11 to 12 years down the road, we would be a school of 1,300 students on this campus. And I think, and our administration thinks, and our board thinks, that that would be a robust, thriving, Christian school, where we can really focus in on being excellent with our kids. And that is the reason for the growth. And so I know that there was a lot of responses that kind of said, "Please don't grow, do quality and not quantity." And I totally agree with that. But I think if we do it right, then the growth is okay, okay? With all of that said, I do want to share with you guys some of the quotes and some of the percentages on our responses as well. I don't know if you guys can see that. But what I wanted to do and what our administration wanted to do is we wanted to categorize areas that were greater than 9%, that were kind of negative. And so when we say negative, it means that you disagreed or strongly disagreed, okay? And if anything that was positive, it was either you agreed or you strongly agreed. So anything that I saw that was over 9%, I... Now, you guys might think, "9%, that's kind of low." But to me, I want it even like 3% or 4%. So most of our responses were at 3% or 4% level. These ones were 9%, 10%, and 11%. But there was only two categories. So that first category was our consistent policies. The next one was school personnel resolve concerns or grievances that I bring to them. That was at a 9.6%. So I want you guys to understand, as an administration, even as a superintendent, we want to not just have a survey and say, "Awesome," and then toss it, right? We want to really dive in, we want to look at the results, and we say, "Okay, what areas can we grow in? Where can we be better?" And those are two areas that we want to focus in. Conflict resolution and consistent policies that we can have in place to help our students, to help our staff, and also to help our parents. But on the flip side, you know, obviously, there are really good positive things at the same time. So two good categories that were above that 85% level. The first one was UC Academy does a consistent job of following and honoring Christ. That was an 87.7%. I felt that was awesome from our parents' perspective, because we do have families and parents here that have different faith backgrounds. For 87.7% of our families to say that our kids and our school honor Christ was a plus for us. That means we are doing something right. And the next one was UC Academy encourages students to follow Christ's examples. That was even a little higher, at 88.1%. So I wanted to share those two with you guys, because as a school, those two are our main priorities. We want to make sure that we honor Christ, and we want to make sure our students are making good examples, right? Or good choices with their examples. So then I want to go to some quotes. This is a good quote. "There are so many opportunities for children to find their niche and pursue their personal interests while receiving a world-class education." Next one. "I appreciate the nurturing environment, the responsiveness of teachers, the willingness of teachers to meet students where they are academically, the opportunity to meet other families who are believers and followers of Christ." And then obviously, we have some quotes that we want to see improvement, right? So it's always good for us to be able to say, "Here's all the great things that we do. Here's all of our strengths." But a lot of us as parents, we're like, "What are we doing with the weakness? What are we doing with the areas of improvement?" And so there are some areas of improvement that are quotes from our parents from the survey. That first one, obviously, you guys can read it too, "But continue to be transparent and continue to foster the growth and stability of our faculty so they can continue to provide our children with the proper attention and growth needed to succeed. Be careful not to grow too fast. Don't sacrifice quality for quantity," as I shared with you guys. And then I would recommend acknowledging and exploring more cultural lessons. "UCA is quite diverse and should show that everyone matters equally." Now, that one really jumped out, because there was actually a lot of responses on cultural diversity, where a lot of parents can see the diversity within our students, but they don't necessarily see it within our staff. And that is something, as an organization, we want to make sure that our students are able to see people as teachers, or mentors, or people in leadership roles above them that look like them. Because a lot of times, when you go somewhere and like, "That person doesn't necessarily look like me," there's already a disconnect. And so what we want to do is we want to commit ourselves to training our staff and training our people to be more aware, not just culturally, but generationally as well. Because the kids now with TikTok and Instagram and who knows what else, we have to be able to keep up with that, and we have to be able to speak to them in an effective way. So with respect to these themes, I want to let you guys know that we have hired an outside consultant firm to come in and to help us identify how we hire, how we train, how we lead, how we discipline, how we treat each other, how we grade, how we bring students in. So I want everyone as a parent to understand that we are trying to do our best to make sure that we can fill gaps. Are we going to be perfect? Never. We are not perfect. There's only one perfect person that came onto this earth, and that was Jesus Christ himself. And so if we can strive to continue to push ourselves there, we are going to be the best school that we can be. And I'm saying, we're not going to be perfect. And we're going to fall flat on our face, and we're going to make mistakes. But the idea is that we want to make sure that we are doing everything possible to make sure that we are doing the things necessary to teach our kids right, to discipline them right, to make sure that they are following the Lord in the right ways, okay? But we can't do that if us as teachers and administration and myself as a superintendent am not following in that path. And so I want to let you guys know tonight that we are starting an initiative within our own staff, and we're calling it the 815 Initiative. And I want to share with you kind of where that came from. So on this next slide, you're going to see where that came from. So I kind of want to share with you my favorite artist. My favorite artist is Vincent Van Gogh. And that painting, well, it's not a painting, it's a drawing. It's an ink drawing. It's called "The Sower." And my favorite drawing of Vincent Van Gogh's is this one right here. So our 815 Initiative is for our staff, it's for our faculty, and it comes from Luke chapter 8, verse 15. "But the seed on good soil stands for those with a noble and good heart, who hear the word, retain it, and by persevering produce a crop." Okay, now, this is Jesus talking. It's a response to letting his disciples and everyone that he was teaching to know about the parable of the sower. And the parable of the sower is a farmer throwing seed, okay? Out on different types of soil. There's one that he throws it on the path, right? And it gets caught up by birds and taken away. There's another one that it gets into the crevices, but it grows, but it gets choked up by weeds and thorns. But then there's another one that the seed goes out on good soil, and it's able to produce a crop 30, 60, or 100-fold. We want to be the good soil here at UCA. The seed is the word of God. The farmer are us, the disciples of Jesus. We're the ones spreading it. The enemy is always trying to snatch it out of our kids' minds and hearts. But we want our kids to retain it, believe it, so they can go and leave here and persevere and produce good fruit and a crop that's going to yield more and more every single year. That is why we exist. So I actually brought that to our staff to let them know that we must do everything in our power, whether we're having a third party come in, whether we're asking the church, ALC, for help, whether it's asking parents for help, that we have to do everything in our power to cultivate the good soil for our kids to grow in this environment. Because the world wants to snatch them away. This world wants to snatch our kids away. There's a lot, I have a lot of friends that have moved out of California. They're like, "We're out of here." Idaho, Tennessee, Texas, okay? But God has planted UCA and ALC here specifically, so we can reach this community and the community around us. And I want to let you guys know that with this initiative, we want to cultivate that good soil for our students and for our staff so that we can treat all of our students with dignity, with respect, and the love that they deserve, because God created them in his image. And I want to share that with you guys, because I need you guys to understand. As my first year as a superintendent, my first year was to come in and kind of analyze, to assess, and to see where do we need to better ourselves and how do we grow in the future. And so part of this town hall, state of the school address, is to share with you guys and to share with everyone at home that we are committed to providing development for our staff, to help everyone in our community with giving them more leadership opportunities for our students, but also for our staff, evaluating and enhancing our dress code policies. There was a lot of dress code stuff in there. I have two kids in junior high. And my daughter's like, "Why can't I wear a red sweater?" I'm like, "I don't know, why can't you?" As well as the dress code, right? So there are certain things, it's like, how do we evaluate? And how do we look at those things to change them? How do we work together? How do we go to the students and ask them? There are certain hairstyles out there now that people just want to have. And our dress code's kind of, "Well, you can't do that," right? I mean, I shaved my head, and the school probably be like, "You can't shave your head." If I was a student. I'm like, "Well, it's already going bald, so I either have to do it or it's not going to look good growing out," right? So those are the areas, like, okay, we need to take a step back, and we need to look at all of these things, and how are we treating our students? With the diverse population that we have, with the generational K through 12 that we have, how are we doing all of these things at a high level to be excellent? Because all of our students, the number one thing that they want is respect. They want to be respected. You know, we come from maybe a generation that like, you know, my grandpa says something, and I have to do what my grandpa says, right? Don't talk back to grandpa. We're in a Generation Z-er now, where it's like, they ask, "Why, why, 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 why?" I want to know why. And as long as we're calm, and as long as we tell them why, they're good. And they've earned your respect. But if you just say, "Just do what I say," now there's a little bit of this, right? And so we as a school want to make sure, not for the kids to be disrespectful, but to understand, like, we will come to your level, and we want to hear from you, and we want to help you grow. What do we need to do? And those are the things that we are committed to as we move forward with this 815 Initiative within our staff, to make sure that we are going into a place where we get to really focus in on how can we develop ourselves as professionals. But how can we also listen to our students and listen to our parents and adjust some things along the way? I gotta go to my notes, sorry. So again, as we cultivate this good soil, and as I shared as a school, we want to get to a school of 1,300 students, so we can have robust athletic programs, arts programs, drama, right? Band. I want to bring a drum line to our school. I think that would be awesome, right? We used to have a drum line about eight years ago. And then the kids graduated, and then we couldn't do it anymore, right? So it was like, we need to get to a consistent basis where we do that all the time. Just to hear that at the football games, it's just, it's awesome. And so those are the things, as we grow, we want to do it with intention. I want to share with you guys a video. This kind of is going to give you a glimpse at the things that are happening with our growth and that is happening on this campus. So let's watch the video. So I know that's really, really short, but it kind of gives you a glimpse that we're committed to creating an athletic field out there that's going to see 800-plus people, that we get to watch our soccer teams and our football teams out there on a turf field. It's going to be amazing. We have six portables coming actually next week that fit 25 kids each, that's 125 students. We're putting high school out there. And then we are in plans to renovate for 12 new classrooms. So obviously, looking at that growth, it's like, a lot of parents are like, "Well, how are we dealing with this?" right? This is how we're dealing with it. We have these plans ready in place. We also have some other ones out in the foreseeable future that we're ready to continue expanding for possibly a performing arts center, a new gym. Different things that we want to make sure that we are being excellent with what God has given us here on this campus with ALC. And so I am just thankful for you being here. I wanted to give you guys a glimpse into just everything that we're doing, a responses to the parent survey, but then also give you guys an opportunity right now to just ask any questions. I know a lot of our parents are going to be coming to next week to our board meeting, and you guys are definitely invited to that as well. That's from 6:00 p.m. to 6:45 p.m. on Thursday next week. But I will open it up if you guys have any questions that I can answer for you guys, yes?
I'm not sure if this is more of a board meeting question, but taking back and off of the diversity issue, I know I was very disappointed in my husband that Black History Month passed and there was not a word, anything on the campus. You know, and some classes had projects. My daughters' class didn't do anything. We do it at home, but there's a lot of kids that look like me in the school. And I don't know how other parents felt, but I felt some kind of way that it was like the whole month of the year, and it wasn't acknowledged at all, not even once. I mean, there was Martin Luther King Day, obviously, kids did projects in class. That's a standard thing, but I'm just kind of wondering, is it like a board thing, how do you guys decide, you know, what's celebrated, what's not? Like I know St. Michael Pass as well, and that's a holiday in most schools that's celebrated. Nothing was said or done for that either. So I was just kind of wondering, how is that occurring?
Yeah, and I'll just tell you that we dropped a ball. And I'll just be honest, like, I'll take responsibility for that. Those are things that usually are taken individually in classes and they focus on. But in years past, we have focused on it as a whole elementary before. I know that we focused on it in high school. And we've done a lot of things actually for St. Michael Pass and Black History Month in high school. All I can say is that we're going to be better in that. I can't sit here and be like, "Oh, well, this happened, and this happened. We just dropped a ball in that." Normally, it's each individual class will focus and do something together. But we need, as we grow, to be able to do those things as a whole.
Even if it's just like, no, a day, it's just something that a whole school does? Because like I said, I don't know how other parents felt, but it's just, it was unusual to, not anything was said at all. Because most schools do that. You know, I'm 39, and all of the schools I've ever been to, there's always been some kind of something. So I just felt that was very unusual that it just passed by and it was just like, what didn't happen?
Yeah, I mean, usually, we do. Usually, we do things. And you know, I don't know if it's coming out of COVID, throw us for whatever. I mean, we're trying to get back into some normalcy, but those things will definitely change, for sure. Any other questions? You put a lot of attention on the...
You put a lot of attention on the consulting firm that is gonna be doing research. Are we allowed to know who they are and what was vetted? How much went into vetting who they are, why they were chosen versus others that you might have had choices with?
Yeah, so, um, one of our parents actually owns a firm, and she has this consulting firm, and we did our research with her. Um, her name is Tiana Sanchez, and she, um, I think it's called...
TSI.
TSI? Um, and again, we vetted her, did our research, um, and she has come in and already transformed a lot of stuff. Um, so if any parent ever wants to sit down with them and ask questions, I will, you reach out to me and we can make that happen, for sure. Um, but we wanted to make sure that we also worked with someone that knew who we were as well. Um, sometimes just having the outside person come in, you know, they have no idea who your culture is and all those different things. We did want someone at least to know some of the stuff that goes on here on a daily basis to help us. Now, the parent is not involved necessarily in all the conducting, it's her team that comes in.
The reason we ask that is because we come from the public school sector where a lot of money was spent on third-party consulting firms that really weren't shopped around, and they spent astronomical amounts on firms that really were not the greatest. And they were putting a lot of bonus on them and their thoughts.
Well, and I could tell you already, they have shown us areas where it's like, wow, like, these are the areas that we really need to focus in on. And so I know that they are excellent. Um, our administration team vetted, and we made sure that we're doing that good work as well. Again, though, if you guys ever want to ever talk to, to them as consultants, uh, feel free to reach out to me and I can set that up. Any other questions? Thank you guys so much. Um, next week, we have a lot of events happening. Um, Thursday is our board meeting, six to six forty-five is the parent session, and then Friday is our groundbreaking ceremony out on the field. We're, it's gonna be amazing, I hope you guys can bring your, your children and, and come out, and, and we're gonna have a really fun time. And then that night is our penning ceremony if, if anyone took the Microsoft certification. So if you have kids in junior high and high school that took that, there's a penning ceremony. And after that, it's promotion, desserts, and parties, and graduation. It's, the last two weeks are pretty crazy. But I, guys, thank you so much for partnering with us. And Pastor wants to say a few words as well, so everybody welcome Pastor Diego.
Thank you guys so much, I apologize for walking in late. Um, I thought I had the night off. Wear a night off, and I'm thinking, you know, one of those moments where I just think I'm supposed to be somewhere. So, uh, thank God I didn't encounter no police officers as I wobbly drove here. Uh, but, uh, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the amazing, uh, principals that we have on staff, and our amazing staff, and then, as you, as, you as parents. We're, we're really asking you to take this journey with us. Uh, imagine you living in a house for forty-four years. You tell me if you've not done some remodeling in forty-four. Think about the furniture, what it looked like. Think about the carpet, the drywall, think about what was in and stylish forty-four years ago. That's how old this school is. And right now, it is under a massive tear-down-the-studs foundation of renovation. Now, most of the time, when you have something like that going on in a house, the family picks up and they move. They go to a hotel, they go to a, a, you know, a rental facility apartment, and they live there. The problem is, is we're still doing school while we are renovating everything. So that's kind of the, uh, patience and understanding I think all of us need to understand in this, in the organization that we're, we thank God for our history, we thank God for our past, but we've recognized we are a little dated. And we have some shag rug carpet that, and, and some laminate that just will not endure the twenty-twenty-two lifestyle, culture, and of what's going on in the world. So we could turn over every little thing, item, and show you, it would bore you to death. But that's what you need to understand, is being done within this organization. And there might be some drop balls because we can't run fast enough, we can't do everything. So it's almost like we're prioritizing what we need to do while we could still live in this school and, and, and thrive in this organization. So I think that understanding is going to help parents to say, I believe their heart is right, I think the things that matter are being done. And with that understanding, you, you watch what's gonna happen in a short period of time, and I'm talking about in the next few years, how this makeover will look tremendously. And, uh, we are in, you know, they are more so than me, but we're in high-level conversations, confrontational talks, um, with the principals. We are all working together to try to solve the problems. And there's nothing, um, that we won't turn over to talk about. Uh, good, bad, or indifferent, even if it's a, a, our personal area of responsibility because nobody wants to think that we're, it's about us, but it really is about the health of the organization. And so I just wanted to share that, and in the, uh, maybe the town hall meeting next week and in the, and in the time to come, you'll be able to understand the org of how this organization now is functioning versus differently from the past, and how because of that, we're able to make quicker decisions, rational, good decisions, uh, weighing out the pros and cons, getting bids, and doing everything to stewardship, but we can move so much more rapidly because the decision-makers are really the empowerment of the HR, the superintendent, and the principal, and the president in there making it at that moment. And they're the experts, and we're making it happen. To, 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 over the last twenty-four hours, I've sat down with the president of a university in South Caro-Carolina, and I, I, I'm asking him, how do I bring millions of dollars in donor fees? In three and a half years, he's raised one hundred million dollars. I don't know how to raise one hundred million. The school does not know how to raise one hundred million. But how many of you know, there's one hundred million dollars out there who would love to fund a field, trailers, an education, and underwrite everything? So those are the things that we're beginning to look at, the consultant, educational people and expertise, bringing them in to help us, so there's a lot of moving parts. I'm invested in this school because I have umpteen grandchildren that are in here. And, and so I got skin in the game, and, uh, I, I just, and, and part of what we're doing is next week that I felt like as the president, I wanted to reopen a time where parents can be heard. They're paying large amounts of money, we wanna steward over their tuition, and if there's something that our staff can learn from, that we can benefit from, then we're gonna hear it at that time. And so that alone shows you the heart of, of, of the new direction we're going is that we want our parents to be heard and give them an opportunity to do that. And so we are extremely, um, elated over the fact that we've got, um, a great superintendent who's just getting his feet wet, who's coming out of COVID, who's trying to manage the whole responsibilities of everything, uh, and to just have grown tremendously in this year, to have a waiting list already of kids begging us to come, and to be ma-making three major moves in one year. Building a field, bringing in trailers, and about ready to undertake a twenty-one thousand square foot renovation. That is massive, uh, to be taking on in a very short period of time. And so for that, that just, uh, hopefully, uh, gives you a little bit of insight, a little bit of comfort, a little bit of trust of, uh, what we're doing. So, uh, I'll, I'll end it at, I'll end it with that, not that you needed me up here to say that, but I just thought I'd, uh, as a president, share a little bit of, uh, what we're doing in, from, from our end and, uh, how we are working closely with everybody.
Thank you, Pastor.
Yeah, thank you.
So let me close out in a word of prayer, and I'll hang around, our principals will hang around. So if you do have any individual questions, we'll just hang out and we can talk with you guys, okay? Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for tonight, thank you for Pastor Diego and just everything that he does here, uh, with ALC. And God, I just pray a blessing over these families and all of our families, everybody at home. And, and I would just ask that you would just protect them, protect them from the enemy, and, and be able to speak to their hearts on a daily basis, uh, where you want them to go in their life. We give this school to you, and we give this campus to you, in Jesus's name, amen. Have a great night, everybody, thank you.